Thank you. Welcome to the Education, Health and Care Transitional Committee number four. To begin with, in terms of housekeeping, if you do decide to get up or run around or whatever you might do, get really excited, please put a mask on. And in terms of facilities, they're on the right-hand side here and out that way. We haven't got any members of the public, so I don't think everybody else knows where everything is. For the recording, I will ask each member and each panel member to introduce themselves, starting with myself. I'm councillor Mohammed Marouf, Chair of this committee.
Hi, I'm Emily Standbrook Shaw, Policy and Improvement Officer, supporting this committee.
I am Janice Gieba from Democratic Services, take the minutes.
I'm Mary Lee, I'm councillor for Darnall Wood.
Councillor Sue Alston, a councillor for Forward.
Councillor Kevin Oxley, councillor for Mossborough.
The offices, I think we need to...
Apologies, Chair, councillor Simon Clement Jones. No, I forgot myself, I didn't log in.
The offices are...
Louise Gardard, post sixteen, Sand Officer.
Kevin Storn, Head of Lifelong Learning Skills and Employment.
Rose Ward, interim head of Sand.
Councillor George Nussamund, councillor for Water and, executive member for Health and Tosh Care.
Councillor Jane Dunn, Southey Wood, and the executive member for Children, Families and Young People.
Thank you very much. Apologies for absence, do we have any?
We've received apologies from councillor Richard Williams and councillor Simon Clement Jones is here as his substitute.
Any declarations of interest before we move into the main item? No? So we move on to item five, minutes of the previous meeting, which was a really exciting one, if we remember, last time. Technology may well break down again, I don't know.
No!
Right. Can somebody say that they are correct? I think they're not that long anyway, so... Fine, thank you, councillor Alston. Before we go into the main part of the meeting, I'd just like to say here that on the 7th of October, we had to abandon the meeting because of technical reasons, and I would like to have on record apologies for people who were prepared to come to that meeting or were watching at home, because there was quite a number of people apparently who were listening in at the time. So apologies on that. That item will be coming to, was going to come to, the 18th of November committee, but apparently I've been told that might well be the full council meeting. So we are trying to move it to the 2nd of December, Emily, if I'm correct, which will be a bigger agenda, but I think it's something that we need to address at that particular time. So we are trying to move it to the 2nd of December. And again, apologies for people who couldn't hear the debate on the 7th of October, but for obvious reasons, transparency and etc., I thought that was the best idea, and unanimously we agreed to postpone that session. Moving on to item six, public questions and petitions, I don't think there are any. Number seven, introduction to transitional committees. Yeah, just very briefly, I think everybody...
Very quickly, we just thought it would be useful, as the second attempt at the first meeting of this committee, just to set out from the beginning the role and purpose of transitional committees. So you've got a briefing note in your papers that you'll all have seen before, at least last time, it's been to various forums. I can pull out a couple of the key points, if that's helpful, or are you happy just to...
Key points?
Key points, okay. I was just going to highlight the first paragraph of the briefing, that transitional committees are advisory, so they're working with the executive to provide advice and recommendations. They're temporary, so they'll only be in existence for this municipal year, and they're not a shadow committee, so it's not a given that this committee will morph into next year's committee system. The governance committee are currently looking at that and how that will look. And I think from some of the informal conversations we've had in this committee so far, there's a feeling that the education, health and care remit is probably too big for one committee, so we'll make sure that we feed that back in to the governance committee through those routes. It's transitional committees are a space to improve how cross-party engagement in decision-making, works in decision-making, so a collaborative constructive forum focusing on policy development around corporate priorities and advising on executive decisions before they're made. We've still got scrutiny this year, if we're looking at service delivery and performance for those kind of issues. There are conduit for consideration of local issues arising from local area committees, and at the last council meeting, it was agreed that transitional committees would also consider what powers and budgets in each portfolio should be devolved to local area committees and make recommendations to the executive on that. So that's a kind of a new thing since they were, since we started. And the key, one of the key things really is about this idea that there is space to pilot new ways of working and to feed that learning into the governance committee as it considers how the committee system will look next year. So a way of trying new, new working and see how that works, evaluate it and feed back in. And I guess, you know, it's very much a new thing for everyone and no doubt will evolve as we get used to this system. I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? I didn't expect any, because I think it's been, it's been done so many times before now, I think members are well aware of transition committees. We move on to item eight, which is the S A N D Transitions Two, and I think there's two reports here, isn't there? So if you can present them, the officers, and then we'll take questions following that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. As I've said before, my name is Kevin Storn, I'm the Head of Lifelong Learning Skills and Employment. I think as a preamble to the report, and Louise will, and Rose will take us through the reports, I think it was just really worth mentioning that we are a new team, we are five months in existence, the three of us, so we picked this agenda up and we're trying to accelerate it and get some momentum and traction behind it. The concept isn't new, that post sixteen transition to adulthood certainly has, you know, has been a predominant feature of the work that the S A N D team have been doing for a number of years. I think we recognised very clearly from our conversations with parents, carers, young people and the parent carer forum, that we hadn't got the traction and the speed behind the activity, and that it was urgent and important that that was happening. Parents and young people were telling us that they were most concerned about what their future looked like and what happened next in their lives, and that the preparation for that transition moment into adulthood wasn't strong enough, it wasn't clear enough, and the pathway wasn't visible for them. So we really took that on board, and we took, we took one really important step earlier this year, and that was to recruit a post sixteen officer, who's Louise, and her absolute focus is upon that transition for young people. And we think that was the absolutely right thing to do, to get that post filled and get someone focusing in on that moment of transfer and of what happened prior and afterwards, to make sure that the pathway was very, very clear. I think what we realised was that the transition work was starting too late in a young person's life. For many, the transition to adult was beginning when they were adults rather than children. And emphasis upon the journey and what the pathway was going to look like wasn't clarified for families, and there was confusion over what that would look like when they finally got there, or indeed they were in the midst of it. So we believe the act of getting a dedicated officer to focus their time and effort on this particular issue is critical. Certainly we believe we've seen some momentum now through the work that Louise has done, and we think that's really important. So as I said, we're a new group, we've been around for five months, I'm more or less standing in with this piece of work to give a bit more capacity to Rose and the Send team, we've got a lot of work to do around the actual guts of the Send agenda, so I'm managing Louise and the function to make sure that we've got some particular focus on it around that agenda. I think it's also really important to say that we've got absolute, you know, really strong political and executive senior leadership support in this, you know, we're reporting now on things we didn't report on before, we've got a very clear mandate to make sure that we're working with families and young people, and that we're making sure that we're reporting about what's happening to those individuals, right down to individual child and young person level. And we think that's important now, because we've got to see that impacting upon those individuals and not as just a strategic concept. I think the implementation of the role and the team has brought about some momentum, and that's, and we're really pleased to see some of that work coming to fruition. We were very conscious that the transition moment was a scary one for the family and the young person, and that we hadn't quite illuminated that pathway enough, and the picture needs to be much brighter and clearer and wider for the families and the young persons, so that we really get that momentum into adulthood moving. So by way of introduction, Louise will now take us through the work that she's been doing, and at a particular point in there, Rose will jump in to link up with the work that we're doing to bring about improvements in the whole Send agenda, because clearly, if we're not getting reviews right, if we're not getting that sort of wraparound support, then we're not getting the pathway right. And we think that's absolutely important, that the two elements, the Send work and the transition work absolutely mesh and link closely together to get it right.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon. Kevin started talking about some of the bits in the report, but I would like to say that I started at the end of May and through June, I saw it as myself to get to know as many different people within the council that I could, and without the council as well, and that includes like the Parent Carer Forum, Opportunity Sheffield, Rose of course in Send, Adult Social Care and colleagues in Health. So I had to talk to them, I did a little bit of report and analysis about the Y14 from the past academic year, that's all included in the report. The findings from that is really the ones I've laid out here, so, and Kevin's just said, the pathways to adulthood really aren't articulated early enough. The transition, particularly around health and social care, again, is quite problematic and quite muddy for people, they're not quite sure what the movement will be, what to expect, and that needs articulating better. There's a big lot of work being done around the curriculum for post sixteen with involvement from the special schools, from chief training and Sheffield College, so that articulates a clearer curriculum for young people with Send. But what's not been done is a curriculum for young people who are probably term more high achieving, so those that could expect to go on to university, and maybe they've been in very small specialist education. So we haven't yet clearly articulated a path, but I am working on that, and I'll talk about that in a bit. There's still a bit of a cliff edge, but we're working on that and we're getting better, and people are getting better with the information, advice and guidance in year nines and onwards about careers and pathways into work and that kind of thing. I did make some recommendations from there, because to me, young people with Send, the vast majority of them should be looking at the pathway to employment. Employment means different things for different people, it doesn't have to be full-time, it can be part-time, it can be supported, it can be voluntary, but young people with Send, the vast majority of them, should be moving into some kind of work. So to try and help that along at the moment, because like I say, the pathways for young people haven't been identified early enough, I've created a Pathway to Employment Working Group, and that working group meets monthly, and from there, the makeup of the group is learning providers, so that's Chief Training, Longley Park, Sixform College and the Sheffield College. We've just recently had the D W P come along as members, we've also got colleagues from Opportunity Sheffield, and we've got the youth service, we've got the SENSARS, I don't think I've missed anybody out, but we meet monthly. What we do is, we bring referrals, anybody can bring a referral, but mainly at the moment they've come through from the SENSARS, so it's young people that are coming to the end of their educational journey, they haven't had that pathway to employment articulated, so it's how we can help them. So we've had a dozen or so young people come through, like I said, the first one was at the end of July, so we've been working at the end of July, since the end of July, and we're moving people closer to that job market. Some of them, it might be that we've had to identify a pathway course through Opportunity Sheffield, one young person through the youth service has moved into full-time employment, and some have decided that they don't want to take us up on our offer just yet because they're on a hybrid pathway, so they're wanting to work on their independent living skills first before they start thinking about a job. So the Pathway to Employment Group is due to meet, certainly until the end of the academic year, and if we find a need for it, we'll keep going. But from there, what we do need as a city is a joined-up, supported internship. Supporting internships are government initiative designed to help young people that have got E H Cs move towards employment. We've got two at the moment in the city, one is Project Choice and one operates from the Sheffield College. And the idea is they have job coach support and they have really good quality intensive work experience, so it's on the job work experience, just as if they were employed. So they choose an area that is of interest to them, and we try and get them work experience, or work experiences, you know, we try and get them the appropriate work experience. However, it's not joined up enough, and it's only small scale at the moment. And like I say, the vast majority of young people with Send should move into employment, so we've only got the two programmes at the moment, so the majority of people we can, or young people with Send that can access those is going to be like twenty-four, twenty-five per academic year. So one of the things that I do want to set up is a citywide, supported internship forum, and I've gone a small way with that at the moment, and I'm hoping to start one within the local authority out of January. So I'm having meetings with various people from H R, Health and Safety, Opportunity Sheffield, to try and get that set up, and we do need some roles within the local authority. It's only going to be small scale, but again, it's something that can be more widespread. So that's the next thing. So the other thing after that was, from the written statements of action, so develop post sixteen annual review, so there's equal contribution, because the one thing that we do find is that the E H C outcomes are very education focused, and we need more help and support from health and social care, and that is starting to happen. The one thing we do need though, because ideally a social worker, if the young person's open to social work, should be in the annual review meeting from year nine onwards, however, we do need people in there that can speak with clarity about what they can offer to the young people, not just a body around the table. So that's another thing that we need to take into consideration when we're doing this. The next thing, Rose is actually already doing, is a regular, robust internal quality of E H C plans, but it's not enough that we just do. The internal quality audit, it has to go back, so we can make those improvements where we need to, because the one thing we do need to get good at is actually looking at, that's a really good E H C plan, or this inclusion officer, or these inclusion officers actually do really good E H C plans, how do we then take that out across the whole of the service? And it's all about C P D and that kind of thing, so, but Rose is already on with that. We also need to get clearer, and I think we're doing this, aren't we, Rose, we're getting clearer about articulating the pathways to adulthood, there's four, there's pathway to employment, pathway to independent living, pathway to adult social care and an academic pathway, and we are getting better at actually recognising those in young people. And it might be that some young people have a hybrid, like I said, they might be doing a pathway to employment but need some independent skills as well, so we are getting better at those. We do need to look at the local offer webpages, it's a very clunky piece of work, and you find yourself clicking and clicking and clicking, and again, sometimes it feels like it's a box that we've ticked. We've put the information there, it's on the local offer, however, in doing that, we're assuming that everybody's digitally literate and has the equipment to actually access the local offer, so we need to, it needs to be more streamlined and it needs to be more accessible, because you've also got people out there that English may be their second language, or they may have poor literacy skills themselves, so we need to, we need to look at that. So the one thing I thought about was actually having a send surgery rate, or a telephone number, or something like that, and Kevin actually said, we can do better than that, we can have send surgeries. So the first one, I'm hoping is going to be on the 9th of December, and we're going to move them around the city, and I'm hoping, I've got lots of buy-in actually at the moment, I didn't think I'd got as much as I'd got, but I have, so we're going to have representative from health, social care, transport, we're going to have advice services there, and Kevin from education. So we're going to take over a family centre around various parts of the city, and young people and their families can come and talk to us about how they can make things happen for them for their adulthood, so they're going to be there. And whatever we can't deal with on the day, we're going to take away and make sure that it's dealt with afterwards and we follow that through. Like I've said earlier, we need to get better at articulating the transition from children's to adult social care and children's health services to adult health services, but I know colleagues in that area are working on it. So I keep alluding to some recent successes, so I am going to talk about that, because one of the things that Kevin asked me to do, and when I started this, was look at communication. And the one thing we realised wasn't happening was, we're very good at communicating with primary school send codes, but not secondary school send codes, so at the beginning of this academic year, somebody called it speed dating, and we had an hour, and again, colleagues from social care, healthcare, careers, others, and Kevin, there was nine of us all together, all in, we had five minutes each, and we just spoke at the send codes, told them what we could do, or told them what the remit was, told them what we could do, tell them how we could help them, and the feedback from that was really positive. And I did say that we're going to do possibly two more through the academic year, and what would they like to see next? And the majority of the send codes that fed back said they would like to know more about the post sixteen curriculum. So what I've done is, I've sent them out the document that was put together, and we've also had it put on the inclusion task force website, so it's there for everybody to see. And like I say, there are two more planned, and I'm going to work with colleagues from chief training, Longley Park and Sheffield College, regardless of that second one, to get them the information that they need. So it will help them articulate those pathways better for the young people. I've said about the Pathway to Employment Working Group, you know, we're being quite successful at the moment, but the one thing that we have done is taken up an offer of support from the C D C, which is a council for disabled children, and I'm going to say N D T I, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten what it means, but it's about inclusion, development for inclusion, I think. So there's a series of those, and I know Rose is involved with them, and we had the first one on Monday, which was really successful, but the one about the pathway to work is on the 19th, Friday the 19th of November, and we're going to be working through a self-assessment tool, and again, that's everybody that comes to the Pathway to Employment Working Group, so we're going to go through a self-assessment tool. Have I done something? Right, we're going to rag rate ourselves, and then we're going to have some actions to actually tighten up and really make that group successful. When I did the analysis of the year fourteen learners, I've put the results in here. A lot of the young people didn't have social work or involvement to social work, and I have taken that forward, and that's progressing now. The recognition is that we need to, we need to get better at articulating to young people, whether they can have that social work support or not, and if they can't have that social work support, what can they have instead? The thing is, a lot of young people did have some progression, so that was sorted. Two of the families that were in that Y14 decided that they wanted to care for the young person themselves, so it's not, it's not all doom and gloom, we are moving forward with that. Another thing again around communication is the youth forum is getting to hear the voice of the young people, because one thing, sometimes that happens with, especially those with E H C plans, we get the voice of the professionals, we get the voice of the parents, but we don't always get the voice of the young people. So I'm setting up a series of youth forums, and the first one is on the 15th of November at Sheffield College, and then the second one is on the 13th of December at Longley Park, and then there will be a series of others after Christmas. And the idea is to get, like I say, to get the voice of the young people, I've put a pre-meeting booklet together just to give them some ideas to talk about, so, and to focus them on, because sometimes it's to get the, you know, the juices flowing, so they know exactly what we're looking for. So the first one is on the 15th, two hours, Kevin's going to join me, and John's going to join me, and we're going to have a great time, I'm sure, at the college, hearing about what young people want. The overarching theme of the morning is going to be, what does adulthood look like for you? Like I say, sometimes we get the voice of the parents and the voice of the professionals, and the parents always want the young people to be doing, but sometimes young people don't want to do what parents want them to do, so it's going to be really interesting actually to get those results and see if they do differ to parents. We've been doing some work around the five-day offer, and that is to do, is once young people move on from school and they move into post sixteen environment, normally the learning programme is three days a week, so what to do on the other two. So what we're doing is, I'm working with the Future Options Provider Service in the council already, and we're doing a pilot scheme through chief with ten young people, and we're looking at what those other two days look like for young people, because it doesn't always have to be learning or formal learning, there's lots of other opportunities out in the community for young people to learn, whether they've got Send or not, to be honest. And it's what their interests are and what they need to help them move forward to become more independent adults. So those other two days, we're working very closely, like you say, with support workers to sort out an agenda for them for those two days, and essentially, again, that's going to be helping them to realise what adult looks like for them. Obviously, we're going to evaluate it as we go through, but the hope is that we'll be able to widen that provision. And again, it depends if people like Longley Park and chief and other learning providers want to take up that other two-day offer. I've already discussed the pop-up surgeries, and like I say, I'm hoping they are going to be a success, but I have been doing some other things as well, and some of them do crop over about the written statements of action, which came out of the Ofsted report from 2018. So we're looking at developing a plan for adulthood, the right pathways, provision and things, so again, I'm working with colleagues in adult social care and health, so we can try and get those pathways aligned, and also working very closely with the Sheffield Parent Carer Forum, so I can get the parent voices. One thing I do want to do to look at that is, what I think is a priority, is looking at the transition booklet, which is on the Parent Carer Forum website, which is something that they've put together, and that they recognise themselves in the fact it needs a little bit of updating, but it needs layering more, I think, and we need tick lists in there, at the very least, so parents can look down at year nine and think, oh, we need to do that, we need to do that, or the doctor needs to do this, or this healthcare professional needs to do this. So we can tick off, and the parent then is very clear about who needs to do what and what the outcome from that will be, but also as well, it will get them thinking about, if we can have that and be really clear about, we need to start talking about the preparation for adulthood in year nine, and these are what we need to start talking about. So there's all that kind of work that needs, that needs to go off, and the Parent Carer Forum, like I say, are willing to work. So part of the written statement of action with the links with the High Sheriff, which I did, I emailed him, and he was very supportive, and hopefully he's going to help to get us some, you know, for the citywide supported internship forum, some more employers there. So we've got that really wide bank of employers that can give us lots and lots of different roles, because one thing I have found is that people, people think that people with Send need to work in horticulture or with fluffy animals or in a charity shop. need to work in horticulture or with fluffy animals or in a charity shop. No, 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 no. Capable of so much more and we need to have that bank of employers there in front of us. You know, because when I was running the support internship programme at Sheffield College, we had some really good young people that could do data input and they were really, really good at that bit of an admin job. And that was what they needed. And they were taken on for apprenticeships and then into job roles. The same when I was working with a major retailer. We had one young person move into the safe, what I'm looking for, it's just gone, help me. Security, safety, security. And he did so well on that. And it got to the stage where he actually opened up and closed the building. That's a young person with send, capable of so much more than we give them credit for. So like I say, so hopefully the High Sheriff link will bring in that really wide bank of employers. So again, the next point, action point ten, we're looking at articulating those pathways. We know what they are, it's just a case of making them clearer for everybody so we can make that picture clearer, wider and brighter. And when it comes to the academic pathway, like I say, for those young people that have got EHC plans that have been in really small, closed environments, nurturing environments like Kenwood and Beckton, the move then into A level provision is really a step too far. So I've got a plan, I spoke to Kevin about it and we're going to try and move forward with that in the very near future to try and get that still that nursery environment, but builds that independence, that move to becoming independent and moving with confidence into the adult world. So then they can move on to university, because why shouldn't they? Supporting internships I've talked about quite widely now and independent skills. Like I say, it's a case of getting those curriculum right now, whether it be for those with more complex needs and those with, you know, those that are quite high functioning. It's how we model the curriculum now to get those confidence and self-esteem in place for those young people so they can get, move with confidence into the adult world. Thank you.
Thank you for that, quite comprehensive and a lot of information to take on board. If we take questions at this stage up to that and then we can come back to you, Rose, for the second part of it, because clearly we don't want to overload ourselves with a bigger presentation. So questions, I think we've got one from councillor Simon Clement Jones.
Thank you Chair. I apologize, I'm on holiday tomorrow, so excessive caution, I'm wearing a mask. First holiday in two years, so fingers crossed. Thank you very, very much indeed for this report. And thank you for your work so far on hopefully addressing some of the issues that Sheffield has. I'm afraid I'm going to have to go back into a bit of history because these things always do a bit. I mean essentially, my, well sorry, first point I should actually make before I say anything about is, is about the acronyms. They're not explained straight away when they first come up. So if you could, if you could do that, work most of them out, but yeah, just a quick point there. Yeah, so thank you very much indeed. But just in terms of where I, where I came from with, especially with education and healthcare plans, was, I mean, it came sort of from the ground up, started with from parents dealing with casework. And then through my work on the audit committee, basically through complaints to the ombudsman, we did, we did some work on that, which actually I think in terms of the transitional committees, it could be something, almost like a model in terms of, it was very much, it seemed to us that the, and I think the officers came and admitted to us, that very much that it was policy that was at fault. It was, it was, it was a kind of a missing compassion and a kind of adversarial way of kind of initiating things which ended up with parents being upset and carers being upset. And obviously, going to the ombudsman shows the level of that is. And we had the recent ombudsman's report, which didn't have, I mean, it had, I guess, one historic case in there. But didn't have the level of ombudsmen's judgments against it, against Sheffield rather. And, and so, you know, at that point, for me, that heart made some degree in that it shows that, and obviously I pay tribute to officers who hopefully have put the work in that means that that has happened. And, and so, you know, I'm hoping that's a sign of progress in terms of the higher end. I just really want to check that there aren't any, the ombudsman doesn't have reports that they're working on now, that are on these and there's going to be a big glut coming through or anything like that. Just to, just to check on, on kind of, kind of that, because we only get them once the opinion is released. And yeah, just, as I say, you've only been at it five months. If you could comment on progress in getting the compassion back, the adversarialness away and how that's hopefully filtering down from, you know, through the, through the whole thing. And not as I say, that the people don't, don't have any compassion. It was very much the process that didn't have, didn't have that compassion. So I think I've probably ranted on enough there, thank you very much. There might be a question in there, I'm not sure.
Thank you. If there is a question in there, can you answer it please?
I think I got the question, I'm absolutely certain I did. I think, I think we've recognised the fact that personalisation is so important for the young people and the families. And that's become very evident in the summer. I picked up, I picked up a number of ombudsman complaints. And I think that was the resounding message that came through from those complaints that if we'd had more personalised contact and had personalised the process much more, then the complaints probably wouldn't have been quite as, quite as strong and difficult and challenging. I'm not saying there wouldn't have been substance behind the query. But I think the thing that hit me face on was the fact that we weren't talking and communicating enough. And Rose and I have talked about this a lot recently, about how we bring that in. We've got, we've got a statutorily follow-up process. But we can follow that process with a smile on our face and by answering telephone calls and meeting families much more regularly so that that conversation is not a distant one. It's not seen as a, as a process, but a person behind the process. So I think that's the lesson we learned this summer. We learned it through, you know, it was a difficult lesson to learn because we had two particularly difficult ombudsman cases to, to review. And that was the bit we realised, we need to talk more, we need to listen more and we need to react in the right way. So, so we really picked that one up. And I can assure you that as we move forward between Rose and I, you know, we've got, we've got a new, a new team in send. We've recruited this summer. We think we've got the people who can handle that kind of work and operation and move that forward. I'm not saying it's perfect in any way, shape or form where we are right now. But I think we're getting there and I think that momentum is really, really important. I don't know whether you want to pick up any of that, Rose, or?
I just agree with you.
She agrees with me, thank you.
Councillor Diamond?
Hi there. Thank you very much for the report, that was really interesting and informative. And yeah, I think it's very encouraging to hear that you say you've got like a person centred approach and also a personal approach. It's really important that people have somebody that they know that they can speak to personally and pick up the phone rather than go through a named person, does make it a lot, a lot better. I was just going to ask you about the four pathways that you mentioned. So you've got the employment pathway, independent living, social worker, higher education. And I know you mentioned that some, some will be like hybrid of those pathways. Do you have like, can you give us an idea of what pathway people are going to, young people are going to at the moment? And do you have a target of how that might want to change or?
Part of the problem is the pathways haven't been articulated early enough for some young people. And what I am doing at the moment is working with some families, half a dozen families or so, to get those pathways sorted. Obviously, there are more than that. And we are picking them up as we go through. We need to get these pathways articulated sooner rather than later so people know where they are. And this is where the curriculum comes in as well, or the curricula comes in. So we've got a post sixteen curricula for young people. We probably need to tweak it a little bit more to align it better to those pathways, if that makes sense. And again, it's down to that individual learning again, the person centred approach to look and say, they need more help to get to work, they're okay being independent. Or they need more help to be independent so they can get to work. Does that make sense? And it's very much now a more an individual process than it being, oh, right, this cohort, they're finished now, so they can go there. Does that make sense? So we're looking at those pathways very clearly and the young people. And rather trying to make square pegs fit round holes, we're trying to make it so it's an easy fit.
Could I just add a little bit to that? I think the bit Louise said there about the clear identification of the pathway early. We are, we are aiming to have that pathway identified at the review in year nine. So that we can begin talking to parents and young people about what that looks like. And of course, that gives us time to align the pathway and get the young person in it. That doesn't mean it's rigid and that they're there forever. It just means that we've got an idea of a direction of travel. And we believe that that will, that will ensure that we have a true partnership with the parent care of family, the young person and the, and the individual organisations who need to support that pathway route. And we begin that work early and we recognise that really importantly. Louise and I, Louise used to work for me at Sheffield College as well when I was the assistant principal for inclusion there. And the thing we recognised there when we worked in that organisation, we were picking young people up at sixteen as they came into college. And they had, that pathway wasn't illuminated. So they were arriving to us without that, those ideas, without the preparation. And of course, you know, the neurotypical young sixteen year old comes into college, you know, I want to be a plumber, I want to be a hairdresser, I want to go do my A levels. And young people with send weren't like that. They were unsure of their direction of travel and their families were confused. So I think the experience Louise and I have in further education when bringing back into school and in terms of getting that started at the year nine review. And I think that is absolutely, you know, it's absolutely critical. And I think also, when we start work at that age with families and the young people, we can begin to increase the ambition there. You know, the thing I've found in my many years, and I'm quite old, but in my many years of working in further education is we end up with three categories of young person. We either end up with, with too much ambition and disappointment ensures from that. So you know, you've got young people who clearly, they aspire to a particular thing, but it's going to be a difficult journey for them. And we need to temper the realism around that. We get talented, capable young people who haven't been encouraged to think about what life can look like for them. And as Louise said, one of the frustrations we've always felt together as we worked is a lack of ambition about work and about what that means and looks like. And I think that's really important. And then there's families not, not understanding what, what they are actually able to achieve together in partnership with the organisation, that's supporting that educational delivery. So we think by getting that pathway started early and getting everybody aligned, you're much more likely to get success out of it.
Thank you. Has that answered your question, councillor Diamond? Do you want to follow up?
Yeah. Right, I might have further questions.
Thank you. Councillor Oxley?
Hello Louise. I'm really heartened by this, this is a lot of work in five months, so well done. It was a comment really about the pathway to employment. I worked at the University of Sheffield for more years than I can remember. And actually, we took some of your students in my particular department on year long, if you like, internship. Have you spoken to anybody at the university in terms of his internships? Because in terms of diversity of roles and jobs, it's probably covering a lot. Another person it's worth having a conversation with is the CEO at Gulliver's Valley. We went for a visit, all councillors were invited to a visit at Gulliver's Valley in a conversation with her. And I spoke to her about a charity that I get involved in, in trying to place people with learning difficulties into employment. And she was really interested in that. And I know from her point of view as well, that she's got an awful lot of vacancies that currently she cannot fill.
The universities are on my list because they're huge employers and they should be able to find some roles that fit our young people. So you're right, it is on my list, but I didn't know. You're talking about the one at Rolla Valley?
Rolla Valley in terms of Gulliver's Valley, yeah.
So the CEO, thank you.
And if you want the name of someone to talk to at, at the university, I'll tell you after class.
Chair, it's okay, I would just like to pitch in there as well. We've recently met with Sheffield Hallam University about their civic university concept. And we brought up the issue of young people with SEND, both being supported and to work by the university, but also that doorway, single doorway into higher education for young people with SEND. Often it is incredibly difficult for them, as you, as you know, and challenging for them. Even perceive that they might have a route in there. But we've opened that route up, not specifically through the civic university bit, but that's enabled us to get in and have that detailed conversation about the university's responsibility as well. You know, we didn't need to tell them that, they're very aware of that and very, very up for that. The other bit of work we've done with regards that links into higher education is create a partnership with the Northern College up at Wentworth Castle. And they're looking at creating a bespoke access to HE course for young people with send with a direction of travel towards Huddersfield University. Now, the reason it's Huddersfield University is they really are a strong community university. And they've got a very good reputation around that. So I've visited both Northern and Huddersfield to begin having that dialogue about young people moving in that direction more quickly. And as a result of that, Northern have created a pre-access course to access to higher education. It's a bit of a mouthful that, but the idea is that they will take young people in without English, without maths and without that level two or level three qualification and prepare them over one or two academic years, providing they're over nineteen and can fit into that budget line, then they're very happy to develop that line of pathway towards higher education. And we're quite excited about that. I know it's very small numbers, but we've got two young people now who have visited Northern. We're going back up there with them in a couple of weeks' time and they're going to look at when we can get them started. So I think that's a really positive move because it breaks down any of the access barriers, but allows them really to get started on that journey towards HE. And Huddersfield University are very keen to, you know, to see these young people move towards them. They're not, they're not really going to do anything different to what they already do. They're just saying, yep, we welcome them and that's good news.
Thank you. Councillor Lindas, have it?
Thank you Chair. And thanks to that report, really, really, really good to see that in a short time, as others have said, you know, long and moved. And I appreciate what you've said and what others have asked around trying to get larger employers and stakeholders to engage us. It's really important because as you just said, with universities, large employers should be able to find some part of their organisation to support and change their culture. And that's fundamentally important. But I've also worked a long time with young people and adults with learning disabilities. And I've also found that many people find less intense and smaller environments really helpful. And I wonder, I know resourcing is, is a huge challenge. But what kind of frameworks can we put in place to allow, to, especially when training's evolved, allow freelancers, micro businesses to explore opportunities that might help some of these young people get into further training, but you know, ultimately employment as well? I appreciate that there's only one of you on a small team and you can't do that work. But I wonder what we can do to develop kind of framework that might support those employers who would like to do something in that area but might not know how to start? Thank you.
I think Louise mentioned our contact with the High Sheriff of South Yorkshire. The contact isn't actually because he's the High Sheriff of South Yorkshire. The contact, that's wonderful that he has that status and he's, he's very willing to be our ambassador around links to employment, which is wonderful. But our original contact was because he's a director of a, of a large company. He is active in the voluntary sector around Sheffield and he's part of Business Sheffield and the links that we have there. And he's absolutely committed to helping us open those doors across a wide range of organisations. I think you're absolutely right councillor, that if we focus on big organisations, that's fine. And we, you know, we do want big organisations. Louise and I were particularly successful at Sheffield College getting, getting Avi involved in it, getting John Lewis involved and other big providers and they did really, really well. But we appreciate the fact we've got to have small, small employers that can personalise the support. It is a big ask right now, there's no doubt about it, you know. Post Covid, the employer's focus is on Post-COVID, the employer's focus is on business recovery and that kind of thing. But we're getting some good responses to the questions we're asking. And we really do feel over time, we've got one, one small employer who's very happy to work with us in the hospitality industry, a very small restaurant, who said, you know, by all means, I'll give them work experience in the restaurant, which I think is really positive. I think what we need to do is get them in there, get one story moving, get it as a bit of good practice and get it out there into the sector. We've also got support from the Chamber of Commerce through contacts that we have with them. And we're also looking at how we can use the Kickstarter schemes to link in. Kickstarter 16 to 24 ends soon, as you know, the last engagements with that are in December. But the South Yorkshire Jobs Fund kicks in in February, which is for 19 upwards, 24, 19 upwards, that sort of range. So we want to use the same employers that we've got engaged in that as well to begin working around that really solid employer engagement. And I think we haven't been adventurous enough with this and we haven't sold the young people to employers in the right way. And that's a bit of work we've got to accelerate and we've got to look at how, with a small team, how we can build the capacity to make that happen. But right now, we've got a lot hinged on. The High Sheriff of Yorkshire lining them up for us and he's very, very enthusiastic and keen to help us in that way.
Thank you. And thank you for your report. It's a very sensitive area, which does need a lot of resources. So could I ask you a straight question here? Have you got enough resources in that area to deal with the situation that you have in hand? Clearly, you've only been there five months. And the answer to that is probably going to be yes. But the remit of this committee is to inform or become a conduit between us and the exec to put forward ideas to them, to actually rectify the problems that you may well be facing. Because this is an important transition into adulthood, which can be quite traumatic. I mean, from the stories that I've heard from people that I've been in contact with, it can be quite difficult. So that's one observation or question to you. And in terms of the summary on this, what would be quite helpful is having, what you mentioned earlier, Louise, was the voice of young people. I would like to be, and I'm sure my colleagues would like to be, part of that hearing as well, to hear from them, what is their experience and what is it that they require from the local authority, which again, helps us in putting forward policy, this policy sort of advice to the exec. So that's another part of it. And the other, I'm just trying to summarise various bits here. And the most important one, and not saying that this is the most important, but it's one of the key ones here, is engaging into employment. I see that you've done quite a bit already in terms of liaising with the High Sheriff and you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce there as well, which is quite an important business community, which I think you may want to, if you've not done already, to contact the Chair there and get a hearing. Because what they do have is regular sessions when people from outside the chamber come in and try to explain to them what, how they want to engage with them. So that could be another area that you may wish to look at. And finally, something that councillor Clement John's picked up on, a lot of people in here are aware of all these acronyms, but people reading it from the outside wouldn't have a, well, they may have, but people who don't understand this, these types of reports, wouldn't understand what the acronyms stand for. I'll be perfectly honest, I didn't understand all of them either. So the question is, one, resources, how we engage and what is it that you require from us to advise the exec in terms of your service area? Forget other service areas, your area that I'm mostly concerned with at this point in time. And then we'll conclude this part of the report and then we'll move on to Rose. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. On the first one around the size of the resource, I think first of all, it's recognition that we didn't have anything and then we've got something and we're really pleased about that. And we've got some really strong political support from councillor Dunne and executive support from John there to get this role in and to get it moving and rolling. And I think we were testing and learning through this role. And I think we realised that the role itself is a critical role within the establishment of SEND. And pretty soon, we'll be going both to councillor Dunne and to John to say that we need this role permanently and it needs to be a solid part of our structure. I think that's the first thing. And I'm quite sure, I'm looking at my boss's boss now and I'm quite sure he's smiling at me. So, you know, I'm sure he'll say yes, along with councillor Dunne. I think that's the first thing. I think the growth element of this is important. And I think the thing we've realised is that we can do more. I think part of that growth is better engagement with partners. And I think we can do much more with that partnership that we have across the city. We've engaged more solidly with the university, with Sheffield College, with other training providers, with the Parent Care Forum. And I think what Louise has realised is that actually, that is the bulk of the resource. So we may need other officers' support, but I think it's that partnership that brings the real strength and depth to this. And creating that strong link across to SEND and the team there. I'm not suggesting we've got everything we need. What I'm sort of suggesting is, we're not there in terms of really learning and understanding what more we need. But what we have realised is by bringing in that full partnership scope across the city and getting those really, really strong commitments, that we're beginning to see Louise's workload drop off a little bit because there's more people working with her around those key agendas. So I think we need to try this a bit longer, keep it going as it is, and then we can decide if we need more resource. And we will be vocal in asking for that, I'm absolutely sure of that. That's important. I think the bit about the voice of the young people, we started this before COVID. I'm really disappointed, we're all disappointed about COVID, but COVID stopped us moving forward with a bit of work. Mr McElrath was with us when we held our first Young Persons Voice event. We worked with an organisation called Kids and we brought a group of young people from all over the city to sheet training them. And it was a really powerful day we had with them. And they told us what they wanted. The reason Louise was able to talk so eloquently about they want the work is because at the end of the day, that's what they said to John and myself, we want the work. And it was a really wonderful event. And I think we need to get that moving more and we need, you know, that's the next bit of going to Sheffield College and begin to expand that work, talking to young people. And we'd be delighted if councillors came and joined us. That would be absolutely wonderful to hear, not just to hear the voice of the young people, but also to contribute to those events. So we'd absolutely love that. Please, absolutely. I think the engagement into employment, the bit we missed out, and I'm really sorry I didn't mention this, is the work we're doing around apprenticeships and traineeships along with the supported internship. Supported internship is one route, but it's not the only route. And we're working with, again, with political and executive support to look at our own internal apprenticeship scheme. And I brought something to my PLT the other day, around some fundamental changes we're looking at to change the way we recruit apprentices ourselves and begin to set a model for that particular piece of work. And that is breaking down many of the barriers young people face to get a job with us and to create a more generic apprenticeship scheme for 16 and 17-year-olds who come into the council and look at how we can create a barrierless approach in access into us as an employer and allow them to develop the skills they need for a career with us. And the idea is by opening that door, we'll see more care leavers, we'll see more people from our wider ethnic groups joining the council, we'll see more people with SEND. You know, we've got lots of marginalised communities that don't necessarily engage with us as an employer. And what we want to do is create a model for that engagement and then offer that out to the city through our wider apprenticeship network. So there is work going on in that space too, to make sure we get that bit right as well.
Thank you, Kevin. I was just saying to Emily that if we can actually organise the voice of young people and members, if they choose to be, can be present, so we can hear it firsthand as to what their experiences are and also maybe their parents as well. So I'm personally keen on working with the service receivers. I know you're already doing it, but I need to be educated. I'm sure, I don't know everything about your work area. So if I'm better informed, I can make, and we jointly can make a better decision on that. But the other thing I would like to suggest very quickly, and I thought I would stop, but I can't, so I'll just carry on, is around the employment side of things. Because we do have a quite a large unit within the authority, which is around regeneration employment, et cetera, et cetera. And I think these two areas are quite gelled together. And if there is something that we can do with our colleagues in other departments, and I think you picked up on this, Kevin, because we don't have to be working in individual departments, if we can join that up in some way, that would be quite helpful too. So I thank you for your report. The idea of this group is that we put forward some ideas towards policymaking and the better informed we are, the better we can do that. And certainly, that's been quite helpful. And you're a very sort of young team in the time that you've been together. So you've got a fairly easy ride really, because we're not going to ask you about the history at this stage. So let's leave it at that. So if we move on to Rose. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, everything Louise and Kevin there have talked about is really progressing well in terms of the post-16 and employment, engagement, training. But obviously, there's the nuts and bolts that I would call it that sits beneath that, that we've got to get absolutely right for our children and young people in order to correctly identify the right pathways. We've got to have the right assessment, we've got to have the right information. And so my report is very much about that underpinning part of the SEND statutory assessment service that then identifies the young people correctly to go into the right pathways at the right time. So I won't bore you too much with data, but I have included some data for you. And obviously, what we can see just with the first page of this is, we are working so hard on our compliance because if we don't get the statutory needs assessment right for these, for our young people of the city, then obviously, we can't identify the right pathways and placements. And therefore, that all then has a knock-on impact as our young people heading to post-16. So you can see that through the red line on that first page, that we have dipped in our compliance, but we are on the rise again. And I just have to say that in terms of the statutory assessment service, you can see from the blue lines going up in the graph, they have finalised more plans over the last three months than have ever been finalised in a three-month period before. So I just want to acknowledge the hard work of the statutory assessment service there. So just in terms of some of the other elements, in terms of getting it right for our young people leading into post-16 and through the statutory assessment process, we've got to ensure that our funding is right for our young people to allow them to best access their education, training or employment. So we're undertaking a funding review. We've got to also ensure that the sufficiency is right, so those, not only around post-16 placements and those four pathways that Louise has articulated, but also the right placements at the point of education as well, so into our schools. So we're working with our commissioners to ensure that we've got the special school places, the right to access our mainstream curriculum, if that's right for our young people, and then obviously, the integrated resources that support the access to mainstream. The other really important point that I'd just like to pick up on this, and I've stopped myself interrupting anybody, was not only the statutory assessment process in terms of the 20 weeks, but also the annual reviews that come thereafter. Because if we don't get our annual reviews right time and time again, and we've done training on annual reviews, there's been a change of the annual review paperwork in terms of looking at preparation for adulthood. But if we don't get that right, then we're never going to get the right information to go into the plans, we're never going to have plans that articulate actually beyond education what that looks like for the life of a young person. And if we've only got educationalists completing annual reviews without the expertise that such as Louise has, then obviously, we're always going to have that education focus and it may not help us to broaden that out. So I just wanted to point out that we really do need to do a much more focused piece of work on our annual reviews to ensure that that is extracting the right information and also that our young people are heard through those annual reviews. Like Louise said, you know, so, and Kevin, sorry, not ignoring you, it's so important that our young people are heard through this because actually, we need to understand that young people have implied capacity until it's proved otherwise to articulate what they want for their future. And actually, sometimes we forget that and we get lost in the louder voices of professionals or even sometimes parents, but we've got to take it back to that young person. So that's something also that I know my colleagues are passionate about, I know you are all passionate about and I'm certainly passionate about in terms of that voice and the right annual review to get the right outcomes. So Louise has already talked about the audits that we're undertaking and making sure that actually, we've got a quality assurance audit. You can see we've picked up the pace of finalising our education, health and care plans for our young people. But what we cannot afford to do within that is lose the quality of those plans and assessments that come through. So we are focusing on having a quality audit that feeds back to the author and the advice givers of the education, health and care plan. Kevin's already covered in terms of the recruitment because we had a diminished statutory assessment service, which you can't put out quality plans in a timely way if you simply don't have the staff to undertake the work. So we've done a big drive on recruitment. We are obviously reporting about, we know much more around our data, around, you know, the timeliness of what's going on. So we're reporting that up to a highest level. I know Andrew certainly has a report every week because I provide it for him. And so we're keeping a very close eye on what's happening in our statutory assessment. Louise has already talked about pathways and I've just put a little bit in about post-16 there at the end as well. And just to set a context to this, so we've got, and I'll just round numbers, we've got around 3,800 children in our city with education, health and care plans. 1,200 of those are within our post-16. And we know that 300 of those currently, as we stand right now, it's around 336, I think at last count, were without a base. So that technically means that they're not in education, training or employment. So we really need to do a focused piece of work there to enable those to access the work that Louise is doing. We've got to be able to say, and it's not just about the 300 that maybe don't have a basis, also around the full 1,200, say actually, well, are you on the right pathway and is this looking right to you and is this enabling you to be able to be independent or in training or employment? Just in terms of context as well around, I've put a bit about complaints and tribunals in here. We know that a constant theme through our statutory assessment processes and for our young people with SEND is that communication, quality communication in a timely way. It's a theme that runs all the way through our complaints, it's part of why we end up with high levels of tribunals. And so we are really focusing on quality communication in a timely way. We've set a precedent that you have to return a call within 24 hours of receiving it, if you can't do it sooner, obviously. Because actually, we can resolve so many issues by just having honest, open, clear, effective communication with our children and families. And then I've talked about placements as well and the importance of placements. And we've got a really robust performance approach within SENSARS now and we're really scrutinising what is happening, not only the data, but also the quality of approach to our children and families and making sure that children's voices are truly at the heart of an education, health and care plan. Because at the end of the day, it's their plan, not ours. On that note, I'll end. Thank you.
Thank you for that. First question from councillor Lee and then councillor Alston.
Well, thanks very much for that report, both of, it was really comprehensive. But I suppose what you reported on is not new. I did adult social care a while back and particular learning disabilities and the conversations I had with parents reflected, you know, they were adult children, the parents I was talking to, but they had gone through the same sort of thing, you know, during their life's journey, I guess, with their children. And I think compliance and all the tick boxes that we need to tick, I guess, but behind all that, we've got parents particularly who are frightened and anxious and they're frightened and anxious for life because they have got a child to look after sometimes for life. They often feel guilty, they certainly become angry and they certainly become very frustrated. And that lasts for years and years and years. And I'm sure you all know that because you've got far more experience than I do. So that communication and that relationship is vital to be developed at a very, very early stage, as early as we can, you know, when people are thinking about, and we know it's very difficult in the best of circumstances for all of us when we're bringing our kids up to make that transition. And we don't always do that at the same time, do we, with our kids? So it does seem to me that's vital and everybody needs to be in the room, social workers, health, who sometimes maybe forget what their responsibilities are. And they've got to look after those kids when they're adults and often for a long time. So it's really, really, it's important that they are in the room for all those reviews and all those discussions as well as parents. And we do, and obviously, need to listen to kids, but I'd say to this committee, listen to some of the parents and their experiences to get a flavour of what it might be like if you're in their shoes. Just the other thing, just going back to employers, because I wanted to just get some point in. I think employers can be recruited, but they would be fearful as well. They don't know what to do and how to help, and they need training and support. And that is resources as well, isn't it? I guess that one. And the other worrying thing that you mentioned and highlighted was websites and digital exclusion. And that's a massive problem. We know that parents of disabled kids, they vastly differ between what with the resources they have at their disposal, you know, in one part of the city and in another part of the city. It's minimal. And I think we just need to bear that in mind when we're designing what comes next in terms of surgeries and websites.
Thank you councillor Lee. I think that's quite a few comments there. But one thing I would pick up on just before we move on to councillor Olds to these parent forums. And I think that is quite key to listen to parents and what their experiences are. Because as councillors, we've all had cases, cases come to us on a regular basis around this subject. So I think that would be a very important thing to educate us and inform us. So Emily can pick that up, that would be good. Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. So I meet regularly with a parent carer forum, which you've heard reference on a number of occasions, and also through them with parents of children who have S E N D. And I wonder if I can take the action away to try and facilitate that conversation on your behalf with the parent carer forum.
Councillor Olds.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the reports and for coming here today to present them. I've just got a few questions around the reports. The first thing is the this, oh, it's obviously a positive thing, this increase in our ability to deal with the plans that we've managed to sustain over the last few months. And I suppose my real question around that is can we actually sustain that level? Is the resource there to do that? And have we got a plan in place to make sure we don't just have a good spike and then it slips back again? Because that would really undo the work that you've done. So that's my first question. My second question is around the audit process. So you've given us lots of information about all the things that you're going to look at, and that's good. My question is, someone who does audit in a different setting completely, is you haven't explained to us what you consider an acceptable standard for each of those things? So when you're looking at something, we need to know, is 90% acceptable? Does it have to be 100%? Because otherwise, you don't know whether you're doing a good job or not. So I think that that just needs building into the reports. You could probably reassure me that it's there somewhere. And my last little bit is just around the the new processes that you're trying to put in place to try and avoid having cases going to tribunal. And as, you know, has already been pointed out, communication is clearly the most important thing in all of this. But I do just want to be reassured that even while you're doing communication, when problems arise and you're trying to avoid the complaint, et cetera, that you will still make it clear to parents, families, that they do have these rights of appeal. Because what we can't have is people sort of being continually pushed down the line and not actually being told where they can, you know, their options. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just come in, because in terms of one of the points that I'm making in the report is that we can see through historical reporting intent that the profile of compliance has been very spiky. And we can't afford to do it again in terms of we go back up and off, we come back down again. Because that's not fair, it's not fair on the families in terms and the young people. In terms of the how we sustain, how many plans we're finalizing now, we have had to have a push on the number of plans that we are finalizing because of the backlog that we incurred. When you see that the red line go dramatically down and we're coming back up again. What I will say is there has been buying, monetary buying into the service to bring in more inclusion officers. They're the people who write the plans. So we are, when I first came in to send back in May, June time, there were actually only six full time inclusion officers. We've now risen to 10 and we've had the buying to have actually move up to 18 to help us to move along some of the backlog and then to be able to sustain that top end of compliance and the level of communication with the families that we need to see, as well as bringing in those child focused, family focused meetings in that first first few weeks when you're going through that assessment period to link into, you know, the fact that we know these are, a lot of parents are worried about their young people, a lot of young people wondering what's going on. So some of that can come in through having lower caseloads for the inclusion office as well to help that reassurance to families. In terms of, and that should help that sustain that level of compliance as well. In terms of audits and what's acceptable, what we have is we have the quality assurance audit, but then we also have a quality standards audit as well. And what we're trying to do, and what we said that we would do back after the Ofsted in 2018, is describe what a good one looks like. We haven't described and articulated clearly what a good one looks like. And it is something that we're doing. We have what I call the Friday morning meetings. They are a send and inclusion combined meeting with health, social care and education represented. And what we're doing in that is ensuring that actually we've articulated what a good one looks like, that we understand how we then close the loop in terms of our audit. Because the activity of audit itself does nothing apart from it produces an audit. We've got to make sure we've got a full cycle of we have done an audit, we understand what it's telling us. And then it goes back to the people who actually produce the education, health and care plan, who were part of that assessment process in order to say, that's really good, that's brilliant, let's take that forward. This bit needs improvement and this is how we're going to do it, both at the individual level for both the child, the family, that plan writer, the advice givers, but also for a service in general. Because if you've got themes coming out, you need to understand the themes of your audit in order to improve your service as well. So that's what we're trying to build. And we've got an articulated diagram in process at the minute being built, as well as then the articulation of the quality that we would expect to see. In terms of the conflict resolution, you're absolutely right. If we build a pathway around trying to reduce the numbers of mediation and tribunals, we cannot take away a parent's right to appeal. So what we do is whenever we send out an education, health and care plan, there is a covering letter that always has all of the information in terms of how to approach mediation. It has the number for sendias on it and email addresses and key contacts, and then explains your right of appeal and tribunal. And obviously, we're not going to take that away from parents and it can still be part of the conversations that we have.
Thank you, please answer your question. Do you want to come back?
Yeah, just very briefly. Yeah, thank you. And I'm glad, it's really good to hear about the increase in staff. And I'm sure that's going to be the answer to a lot of it. Are there enough people out there? Because some of these people will move on over time, that's happened. Are there enough people out there with the relevant training skills? Or do we do internal training and have we got that in place as we need to replace people?
So we've been really looking recently in the number of people who are applying for the inclusion officer jobs. We put it out regularly as a rolling programme and we are getting quite a number of applicants in of whom do have the right skills and experience in order to be able to undertake the job. What we've also done that I haven't mentioned actually in the paper is we have commissioned IPSE to do the legal training for the team. And that doesn't matter if you knew what that is for the entire team and we'll keep commissioning that as we need it. We're obviously working, as Louise said, with C D C, so the council for disabled children. And that brings training into the team as well. And we've also got our internal training that is looking at what each section of a plan should look like. And then obviously, the audit that we're talking about in terms of what a good one looks like will also further help to bring on the team to really upskill the staff that we have. And we have an induction programme that's a three month induction for anybody new into the service that covers what the compliance needs to look like, what a quality plan needs to look like, what an assessment needs to look like. And then now, we've currently just introduced as well, practice standards. There is a clear articulation of the expectations of working within CEN SARS. And in that, it covers the training, the communication, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we've got quite a few bases covered. I'm not saying, I'm not going to claim that we've got all bases covered, because there's always something comes back and bites you. But I feel like we've got a lot of it covered, fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got three further questions and in the following order councillor Diamond, councillor Clement Jones and then councillor Oxley.
Thank you very much. I'll just, a few questions we were probably quite quick to answer, just querying the figures. I think you said that there was 336 children with E H C Ps that were neat, is that right? And is that out of the post sixteen cohort of 12,000 or altogether? Or is it just the post sixteen cohort?
That's the post sixteen though.
Okay. And the second question was around the recruitment, which you've probably already answered as well. Is all those resources committed already in terms of, so you can get the target of having 150 cases per inclusion officer? That's all in hand, you don't need further resources to do that?
No, what we did in order to ensure that we would get the right number of inclusion officers for the right number of current education, health and care plans, and also allowed ourselves a little bit of increase as well. We worked it out that 18 would stand us in that, being able to do that. So they'll start off with a case load of around 120, increasing to 150 as the number of assessments and plans increase.
And finally, just on the graph, which graph is it? I think it's the graph about send related complaints. There seems to be quite a dramatic increase in 2021 to 22 to date. And I was just wondering what the reasons might be for that.
So there are a couple of reasons for that. So obviously, before I came into post, we'd got a number of plans that hadn't been finalized. So if you don't have a finalized plan as a parent, you don't have a right of appeal, you're not going to complain because you haven't actually seen the plan that is articulating your child's needs. So obviously, increasing the number of plans that were finalized therefore increased the number of complaints, unfortunately. The other thing that we've got is that is mentioned through the report is we do have a sufficiency issue in terms of the number of special schools. I know this is a national picture that everybody faces the challenge of. Demand is rising and we cannot find the spaces in the right educational provision for some of our children. So in that, then you also get a complaint because we can't find the right educational establishment for a child or young person. So that is another theme of the complaints, because we've had to finalize to a school that we know may not be the right school. But then we've had to bolster and scaffold and say, actually, we are going to provide additional support resource, whether that's monetary or people resource into that school in order to be able to best meet the needs of your young person, child or young person. But obviously, still with parents understandably, that doesn't feel enough because they know their child needs more.
Would you think that increase is linked to academization and having less power from the local authority over schools in order to place people and more power in academy chains?
I wouldn't, we're not struggling to place the children in terms of the mainstream accepting the children and young people. It's simply the fact that we need, some children need a special school. And we just simply, there's just not the space, there's not the seat to put them on, you know, unfortunately. So no, I wouldn't say that is a factor within this.
Yeah, as just to advise members, there are, as Rose has said, there's a number of challenges nationally around sufficiency, as we call it, of placements for children with S E N D. And I wonder if if members are interested in that type of conversation, we could maybe bring something through to scrutiny or have that conversation in that space. But generally speaking, it's fair to say as a context, sufficiency of placement for children is a national, not just a Sheffield issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the report, report of actuals. So I, for my sins, am also a chair of the South Local Area Committee. And which we make, you know, six o'clock, luckily that clock is an hour fast. So, or maybe unluckily, I don't know. So we're getting kind of to the point where we start to get the consultation we're doing back with communities, organisations, with everybody we possibly can. And, you know, through that process, one of the, well, some of the main themes that will be coming out of that are around digital inclusion, opportunity, skills, and especially a focus on young people. And so obviously, I've been kind of thinking about post sixteen and a lot of this stuff, quite a lot. And then obviously, with you talking, it kind of clicked that obviously, I was thinking very much about mainstream and what we can do for them. And really just to ask, I don't want to add to your workload, but I think it probably would be helpful if we could have some kind of conversation around that, so make sure that, so yeah, the local area committee is, it's good, I say, it's going to be, I don't know kind of how the plan's going to work out, we're only at the very beginning of it. But to say, I think your input into that plan would be very, very helpful. So if you want to drop me an email, I'll certainly drop you one as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Oxley.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Rose. Thinking about the appeals that went to tribunal, what were the common themes within those appeals? And how has that been welded into the standards and then the audit that you've got? And I might, depending on what you tell me, I might have to ask you another question.
No worries. Thank you. So the appeals that are lodged, I mean, there are only certain sections of the plan that you can appeal, which is section B, section F and section I. And the majority of our appeals are sadly for all three, which means the outcomes, the provision and the placement the parent is appealing against. So that means the quality of the plan, or not necessarily the quality of the plan, but the content of the plan the parent isn't happy about. That then takes me back to the fact that we're not co-producing plans at the moment. We write plans almost behind closed doors. If we co-produce, we'd have less chance of the appeal happening. Because obviously, if you've been part of writing it, then you're going to feel more satisfied when you get your voice heard and your child seen through that plan. And then obviously, the placement in the situation that we've just talked about, that John came in on there and the, you know, the national context of the spaces and sufficiency, that then leads obviously to the challenge around section I. So they are the themes of our tribunals. What I will just say is that the appeals that have been taken forward and the ones that go to hearing, so we always try and prevent it going to hearing, we always try and stop. If we can stop an appeal going all the way through, then we would, because it's a very, very stressful time anyway. The whole process is very stressful, but particularly then when you've got to fight us in a legal arena. That is just, that's not good for anybody and it is a very costly, it's very resource intensive and it's very stressful. So if we can stop that from happening earlier on, that's great. When we do actually go to the hearing over the last three to four months, it has been found in favour of the local authority. So I'm not saying it's right that we've ended up there, but sometimes we have to go to that level in order to ensure that the young person is, has the right things in place for them, whether that be their outcomes in the plan, the provision that's in the plan or the placement that's in the plan. Ultimately, the tribunal sometimes does have to make that decision to ensure that all things are considered. And we do have that independent, you know, what's the word I'm looking for there, who aren't involved in the process.
Okay, so obviously, prevention is always better than the cure. So what more can we do to mitigate? Because you've just described the time, the cost, the stress from both our side as providing the service and from the parent's side. So what more could we do?
So there's a few things that we've already got in place. So there's the allocated, so at the minute, how it's worked, because there's been such diminished staff within the statutory assessment service, that has meant that things have been picked up by people who maybe don't know the family, they haven't had the history. If you have a caseload, so we have, if we have a good level of inclusion officers, they have a caseload, they will have relationships, they will know that child, because that's also really important. Because if you understand that child, if you've seen that child, that creates a relationship. That immediately means you want to write a better plan, you want to do better in that assessment because you know that that individual. It shouldn't be like that, but that's human nature, that does drive us, hopefully the most of us. So there's that element of it, should improve that. There's also the co-production side of it that we're going to introduce. So lower caseload means, and allocated caseloads mean that then you can take forward and you can listen to that child and you can listen to that family first and foremost. I know we've talked about the importance of the right professionals being involved and giving, I'm looking off some music accompaniment now, and giving the right information to allow us to have the right provision. But actually, sometimes the child and the family voice can be drowned out by those multiple professional voices. So what's really clear within the practice standards that we're introducing is that actually, we want to hear from the child and we want to hear from the parent first before we get all the professionals involved. And then the other thing is about the conflict resolution pathway that we're putting in place. If we invest time trying to prevent it rising up, obviously not taking away the right of appeal, but if we invest time to try and keep resolutions as peaceful as we can and as streamlined as we can. And again, building that relationship, hopefully some of that, again, will see the reduction. I think I might have deviated away a bit from your question, so is that all right? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Further question from councillor Oxley? And then a final call for questions for anybody?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to come back, but I had meant to ask about, and then it's, other people have reminded me about this concern about number of placements. Because I think this is actually sounding more worrying than I thought it was. Do we know, are the, I think we do know, so I'm asking you to tell me. What are the numbers, do I anticipate that the numbers of children who need these special school, special educational placements are likely to increase? Because that is my understanding. Given that it's a national problem, that's also telling me that we can't just use resource that's sort of just over the border, not that that's a good idea, but you know, even, we can't even have that as an option. So what is it that we as a local authority could do to try and address that? Because if we're going to have increasing numbers of children needing those places, we're not meeting their needs if those places aren't there. So I think that's actually really quite concerning.
Yeah, so we are, I was going to say we're lucky, I don't know if that's quite the right terminology, but we are lucky that we've got a new special school opening in September 22. So that will obviously alleviate some of the pressures that we see. Because we can also look, there will be families that choose to go into the new special school that's being built, but with a new plan. And then there will also be others that perhaps have preference one of our existing special schools that may then preference for the new school. So that will alleviate a lot of the pressures that we're currently seeing. We've also got, our commissioners are working with our mainstream schools to build hubs and integrated resources that can better support children with SEN on the mainstream site. Because we cannot forget that every child has the right to access a mainstream provision if that's what their parents so choose or that's what they themselves so choose. So it's important that we really strengthen inclusivity of our mainstream schools through the investment in the integrated resource. There have been 30, I can't remember exactly, 30-something places this year being further commissioned by our commissioners within our mainstreams for integrated resources with the view that hopefully next year they will, and I'm saying this very tentatively, double the number of IR places that have been increased from this year into next. But that's tentative, but that is the hope. So we can have the right children in the mainstream supported correctly. But then also, we've got the new school being opening in 2022 and then a further new special school planned for opening in September 23. So whilst we do have this struggle right now, we've also got, we know that there is hope in the future that we're going to have the right number of places. We've also got the commitment as well to look at, I've mentioned it in the paper, the high needs funding review to look at actually how we appropriately fund our mainstream schools to help to keep our children in the mainstreams. Because actually, a lot of them have peer relationships. And again, goes back to the right to a mainstream education. So there are a lot of positive things, I feel, that would hope to alleviate the numbers of children that we see what I would call inappropriately placed.
Thank you. Any further questions from anyone? Before I bring this to a close? There's no further questions. Thank you for that report. I mean, the question that councillor Oxley has got was one that I was going to ask around school places. Because that's been quite a key area that hasn't had the resource there. But clearly, 2022 and 23 should start to alleviate that issue. But clearly, also, there is a greater awareness of SEND needs. And Andrew will bear me out on this. For the three years that I've been involved with this area, it's a constant question that we keep talking about around SEND and how the provision is. And clearly, it's been picked up in audit as well. But in your mind, another school in 2022 and 23, would that compensate for the number of people that are coming into the system? Or would we still be in a position where we'll be still short of the numbers? And if we're short of numbers, is there private provision that's coming forward that's filling that gap? And is that private provision adequate in terms of quality that's being provided? That's one question and an observation from my perspective. The other area, and I'll just finish off with all my comments and then you can answer them, Rose. In terms of a dedicated telephone line, I feel that is something that we really ought to be doing. Because the number of times you get cases coming to you and people saying they've been overwhelmed with professionals and the child gets lost in the whole process and the parents get lost in the whole process is more than you really want to hear, to be fair. And some sort of sensitivity around that will be quite important, I think. And I know you're touching upon it because you've only been post for five months. I don't intend to ask you questions from what's happened in the past because I don't think that is fair at this stage. But moving forward from this stage, I think that we need to look at that. And maybe some of the recommendations that we come out with back to the exec, which is why we need to be informed on that sort of area as well. So that is important. The other area that I think we need to be more engaged with as a group, as a group of members here, because not all of us have the same background in terms of education, is to have some sort of further parent forums, just like we talked about the young people's voice. And I think Andrew's going to pick up on that as well, I would imagine, with the other forums that we're picking up on. John, sorry, sorry, John. Yeah, we'll pick up on that as well, I do apologise, so. So used to talking to Andrew. Yeah, so we will pick up on that as well, if we may, as an action from that. And the other area that is concerning, and this comes through case work again, is the number of years people are actually waiting. I mean, I've had an instance where I think somebody was saying there were nearly three years waiting for their EHCP happening. I know you're saying we're getting quicker, but also there must be a backlog that we're not, the backlog follows the process of getting quicker as well. So that is another area that I think may be something that we look at. I know we get a good answer when we get through to yourselves or John or Andrew or whatever. But when we're talking to parents, they really, really do struggle to get through the system. And I know we're victims of circumstances and I know it's not nobody's fault that we've ended up in this position that we've ended up in. But I think this is top priority as far as I'm concerned, young children in the city. And we have a very strong responsibility there. And in terms of tribunals, and then I will stop. In terms of tribunals, I know that is a very, very expensive route. And sometimes we have to end up at tribunal. But is there, would there be any mileage in people who've been through the tribunal process, whether they would be willing to discuss that with us? To say how they ended up there, what their experiences were and how that could have been avoided? That's another one, John, that we could potentially look at as well. And I'll shed upon that and thank you for what you've done today. Maybe you'll just comment on some of the points.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would like to comment on some of the points. So in terms of those that have been through tribunal, myself and Andrew, not John, myself and Andrew, we have been talking to some of the families that have been through tribunal and to some of the families that have also been, like, if they've gone to stage two complaint. I know Kevin has talked about families, he's been talked to through the Ombudsman route as well. So we are trying to open those lines of communication and say, tell us your story. Tell us what it felt like for you. And obviously, that then is why we've made some of the changes that we're seeing now in terms of caseloads, co-production, you know, being clear about communication expectations. So that's where some of that comes from. In terms of the years for an education, health and care plan, we currently, as we stand today, have only 10 plans. So these are plans that are waiting to be finalised that have gone over 20 weeks. There is one that sits at 43 weeks, which is my deepest concern. But the rest of them are all sitting just over the 28 timescale. And they have a timeline applied to each of those 10 for finalisation. I think from speaking to some of the families and speaking through some of our schools, what the issue tends to be is that the EHCP is written, but then it's who's responsible for it. I know who's responsible for ensuring that section F within that plan is delivered. And actually, if we just pass the plan over to the school and say, now you need to deliver that, we are not, we are not taking our level of responsibility for saying, how are you going to do that? And that through the funding review and through the meetings that we're going to be having with schools when we have finalised a plan, that will start to address some of how section F is going to be implemented in that school and what that's going to look like for that young person. Which should hopefully, again, prevent some families from feeling like, well, I've been through this process, but nothing's happened as a result of it. Because there will be funding and there will be provision in place for that young person. In terms of a send telephone line, I think it's a really good idea. I think we'd have to look at the resource and staffing around it. I'm hoping some of the caseloads that we've talked about in terms of having that clear inclusion officer and clear communication should alleviate some of the need for a specific dedicated line. But there's no reason why that cannot exist alongside the caseloads. Our autism team and our educational psychology already do have phone lines that can be there for advice for families or professionals, to be fair. But there might be a need for a more generic in terms of an advice line when you're thinking about statutory assessment as well. In terms of sufficiency, I've done these in reverse order. I'd like to say deliberately, but in terms of sufficiency, what I will say is it's really hard to determine what the demand is going to look like. As we all know, we're still in the midst of a global pandemic. So that has increased the number of children that are coming through into the statutory assessment arena. And we have seen more and more children coming through. So it's really hard to say, is what we've already got going to be enough? But what I will say is, I feel that the relationship between the statutory assessment and our commissioners is stronger than it's ever been. We have a good reporting mechanism in terms of not just their own forecasting, but then looking at real time what is happening with our children and young people. How many are coming into the assessment room? And how many are there then moving into this what we've deemed inappropriately placed? Because they're the children that first and foremost need those places available to them. So whilst I can't answer, is it going to be enough? What I will say is, we've got a good mechanism in order to be able to determine in good time if it's not going to be enough.
Thank you, Rob. I think that sort of concludes this item. We've got certain actions that Emily's going to pick up and John's going to pick up. And following those, I think we as members need to probably sit down and work out what our recommendations will be to the exec. And I think that is the plan of action that I think would be the best course for us to do. So we'll debate all these things afterwards in another meeting, I would imagine. But we will then put those forward as recommendations from our, to the exec. So thank you so much for that. I thought it was going to be a fairly short item, but it's quarter past five. And I know John needs to go at 5.30 as well, so we've got one more item to do. So you're welcome to stay or you can leave now if you wish to. In terms of the next item, unfortunately, that is not going to be reported on today. There has been a bereavement in the service area. And I thought it wasn't, it wasn't right to actually ask them to come here and present that. They're in a very traumatic state at the moment, so it's been a sudden death, hasn't it? So that's going to be coming to the 2nd of December, 2nd of December committee, which is going to be quite overloaded, isn't it now? We've done two hours today, we probably intend at four hours on that day. So just on to the final item, which is the work plan and ways of working. And Emily?
Okay, yes, so as the Chair mentioned previously, it looks like the next scheduled meeting of the committee for the 18th of November may well possibly be the day for full council. So that's not confirmed yet, but if that does happen, we will need to push the home care item to the 2nd of December meeting. And we'll make sure that we add in an additional meeting of this committee early in the new year. So you'll still have the same number of committee meetings, it'll just be backloaded. And we'll also look at the best way of bringing the future priority budget item that should have been here today. In the meantime, following today's discussion, I'll work with John and his team to find a range of mechanisms for you to hear from parent care forum groups and young people's voice so that we, and then we'll also work out the best way to then bring that information back into the formal meeting. So I imagine not all of that would probably work as a formal meeting of the committee. So there'll probably be a range of options and we'll keep posted on that, if that's okay. And I think that's all I really need to say on that, unless anyone's got any questions or anything to add.
I think that concludes business unless anybody's got any other business.
I was just going to say, this is like a trial run for next year. And we need to have some time where we might reflect on our experiences here and pass those thoughts to the governance committee, which she wants to sit on as well.
Yeah, that's exactly what we need to be doing, yeah, I agree.
Shall I look for, that's the kind of thing that we could do in an online session, if you'd like me to set up a time to come together informally to reflect on learning from this committee to feed in?
Open it up to everybody, do you prefer an online session or in person? I don't mind. Whichever you can do, Emily.
Whichever you can do. I mean, it doesn't have to be, it's not urgent, is it?
No, no, it can be, as you mean. Thank you very much, and that concludes business for today. Thank you.